The Stillwater Planning Commission Meeting of January 28th will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative. Then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition of the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And then before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant and/or their representative will have an opportunity to respond and provide additional information and answer all questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. And then we will hear closing remarks, pardon me, and alternatives from staff. With that, we'll start with the public hearing items on the agenda. The first item is for a map amendment, that's MA 25-15. And I believe that this, and we've had a request to withdraw this. So we will need a motion to withdraw from the agenda, or we can just administratively.
Just continue on.
Okay, alright. So that item has been removed from the agenda. The next item is a short-term rental, STR 0193.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I am Josh Brown. I'm the project manager in development services. As mentioned, this is a short-term rental license application for 137 South Monticello Drive. Here is an area map showing the property with frontage on Monticello Drive located in between Sunset Drive and Orchard Street. The planning commission is the hearing body for STRs, or short-term rentals. The hearing is to be held similar to that of a specific use permit, but there is no staff report or presentation. And then, just as a reminder, the city cannot enforce private restrictions or covenants, but can give weight to them as part of the deliberative process. Are there any questions for staff?
I don't think we have any for staff, thank you. So at this time, we would ask if the applicant or representative of the applicant could please come forward? Hi. State your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Do you want the address of the rental?
Where you reside.
Okay. My name is Kathy Babb, and I live at 615 East Pioneer in Cleveland, Oklahoma. And this is John Parks. I'll let you introduce yourself.
My name is John Parks. I live at 7820 Dry Bean Trail, Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Now, do you want me to present something, or?
If you could just, maybe just tell us a little bit about the property and how it will be used, that sort of thing.
Okay. The property we bought in 2012, when my daughters were students at OSU. And when they moved away from Stillwater, we rented it to college students. And it got in quite a bit of disrepair through the years. And so, last year, last fall, I had a major renovation of the outside and inside. And John was actually the project director. We intend to use it as an Airbnb. My daughter and son-in-law-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, they can't hear you in the back. Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
You can push it down a little bit.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. My daughter and son-in-law have used Airbnb successfully and been happy with the vetting process that they use. John and his wife Karen are going to be the property managers. We're not going to allow large parties. It's going to be eight people or less staying there. Quiet hours will be from 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Maximum of eight people there. No pets, no smoking. I think that's it. Basic rules of what we're going to require of the guests staying there.
Is there a minimum stay? Minimum number of nights?
Tonight. I guess I could say a little bit about the parking, because a lot of the college kids have gotten tickets over the years by parking on the grass. But there's enough room to comfortably park five vehicles, large vehicles. There's like a circle drive, there's a driveway in front of the garage door, and then there's like a brick paver pad that will hold additional parking.
Will you have any restrictions about local people renting it?
No. Just, they have to be 25 years or older. And Airbnb is really good about if people have caused a problem before with rentals, they will alert you and let you know that there's a problem.
So your plan is to use that platform?
Yes. And mainly, our target is for people coming in, like for Dad's Day, or Mom's Weekend, or Oklahoma State Events. That's who we're targeting.
So basically, this was a college rental, and the college students destroyed it. Now you're looking to move to clientele that's going to take better care of your property.
Right. Because we had, you know, like, they had to leave the house, like they found it, to get their deposit back. And it was constant, like, a lot of work. And then it, there were some things that, you know, they didn't get their deposit back, but we still had a lot of work to do after they left.
So you think the property will actually stay in better condition?
I do. And John and Karen are in town, and they are by the house a lot. I'm in town a lot, and I check it out. And we have security cameras in the back to make sure nothing's going on back there. And then a ring doorbell that shows if extra people are coming in.
John, you'll be available for on-call emergencies, any disturbances, things like that?
Absolutely. Once people check in, I'm available to them. It'll be my number that they have in case there's anything that takes place. My wife and I also own a local cleaning service here in Stillwater, and we'll be the ones that'll be taking care of the cleaning as well, too. So we'll monitor cameras, we'll monitor any emergency calls that would take place, or need calls that would take place, such as we can't get the lock to work, or anything that may happen. So I'm approximately 10 minutes from that property. And it's been a very amazing process to watch this house go from, in a challenged state to beautiful, actually. She's revamped the yard, she's, you know, the flower arrangements around, the backyard as well. And it's just really exciting to see this as well. Inside of the home is very simple to use. And we also will have directions where there's fire extinguishers, of course, local emergency numbers, 911, fire department, things of that nature. And then also, we'll display a notification letter with my face, my wife's face, and the phone number in case something's needed. So that if they do call, and I show up, it's not just a random person, they can connect the face with who this is. So that's a touch.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Could you tell me again, how long have you owned the?
We bought it in 2012.
2012, okay. Do you have a good feel for how much of the neighborhood on that street is owner-occupied or rental?
Predominantly rent.
Predominantly rental?
A lot of college students.
Okay. So the, do you have a feel if it's more long-term rental, or a short-term rental like this, like you're choosing to do?
I don't know the number. I know there are other short-term rentals in the area.
In the area, okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Alright, thank you very much. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item, to please come forward. Seeing none, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item, to please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and just ask staff to present us our alternatives again.
Okay. Your alternatives are to approve the application, to defer for additional discussion, or deny the application.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the application. One second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a map amendment, MA 24-16, and we shall hear from staff first.
Okay. So, here we go, alright. As stated, this is a map amendment. This is for 55 West Sixth Avenue, or also known as 5499 West 6th with Paint County. This is to rezone a portion of the lot from commercial, general, two-family, and multifamily residential. Here is an area map of the property. The red line that you see kind of towards the top, that is the city limits boundary line. There is a tiny boundary that, a tiny boundary of this lot that abuts Sixth Avenue. But for the most part, this is a landlocked, this is landlocked from the public right-of-way. Okay, so this is an aerial view. As you can see, O'Reilly Auto Parts is located directly to the north. The Country Club Basin subdivision is to the southeast, and the Crosswind subdivision is directly to the south. This is a view from West Sixth Avenue. The subject property is actually in the back there towards, or closer to the tree line. There is another lot that fronts onto Sixth Avenue that is also vacant. Alright, here's a zoning map. The subject property is outlined in the black polygon. Two zonings currently on the lot, commercial, general, and two-family and multifamily residential. The applicant wishes to rezone to bring the entire lot to two-family and multifamily. Okay, this is the future land use map. The future land use map was adopted with the comprehensive plan and is used to predict desired uses. The comprehensive plan in this area calls for commercial. The applicant's representative is here to answer any questions you might have. Are there any questions for staff?
I think the question that I have is just access to the right-of-way, and I don't know if that's better answered by staff or by the applicant's representative.
Probably better by him. However, I'm pretty sure there is a private access easement.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, if the applicant's representative would like to come forward, give us a little bit more information.
Hello, Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design at 923 South Lowry. So yes, the lot is currently, it has two different zonings on it. And we're requesting to rezone to RTM. There is RTM nearby to the south and to the southeast or southwest. And there is commercial north. As far as the access easement, there is an access easement through the O'Reilly's parking lot, that directly, adjacent to the property, as well as an access easement on the lot to the west of O'Reilly's. Right now, the plan is we will use the O'Reilly's parking lot for access. And the strip along the west side, there's a utility easement covering it, and that's likely where the water line will go to service the property.
I'm sorry, say again, the utility easement is?
On that, on that long strip to the west.
On the west.
That abuts Sixth Street.
I think I noticed that there's like a communications cabinet there.
Yes, yeah. And we'll have to work with utilities to work around that.
So I think I'm a little stuck on the access easement. So it's a private access easement, is that correct?
Yes.
So, does that make this a non-conforming lot?
What do you mean, a non-conforming lot?
That it doesn't about a private, a public right-of-way?
So the, it does about the public right-of-way on the west side, where that cabinet is.
Okay.
But no, we couldn't use that for access.
Right. You can't get vehicular access down that?
Correct, yeah. So I don't know what the definition of a non-conforming lot would be, but we would not be able to use that for access. We'd have to use one of the other private access easements.
Okay.
And if it was going to be developed commercial, we would still use those access easements. So we're just requesting that it be zoned to two-family, so the whole thing is one zone. And no matter what it's developed at, at any point in the future, that they would have to use the current access easements.
Which one of these buildings is O'Reilly's on this map I have? The east?
The one on the east.
Far east. So what does it actually mean to have an access easement through their parking lot?
It means that the subject property has the right for any use of that property to go through the O'Reilly's parking lot. That O'Reilly's can't block it off and prevent access to the site.
So does that mean if they build homes there, or whatever they build, that the residents will be going through the O'Reilly's parking lot?
Yes.
But that was something that O'Reilly's would have agreed to-
Yes.
-in the time of their portion being built, is that correct?
Yes.
And then if it is on their property, and it's not a public access, then whose responsibility is it to maintain that vehicular access? So for emergency vehicles and such, back to this development?
Yes. So, yeah, we've had discussions with fire already, and my understanding is O'Reilly's would be responsible, since it is their property. They're just granting access to the subject tract to use their property for a means of gaining access.
And is there an agreement from O'Reilly's that they are willing to maintain a private drive to, for public access?
Yeah, that's part of the stipulations of having an access easement, is they have to maintain access through it.
So they have, they can't block it, but I guess what I'm getting at is who's responsible to keep some, keep a street to city standard for, say, a fire truck?
Sure. So I don't know all the, or all the stipulations within that access easement, but my understanding is that the developer and O'Reilly's will probably collaborate in some fashion, as far as maintenance and access would be. But right now, there's already an access easement, and it's O'Reilly's parking lot. And O'Reilly is responsible for any maintenance to their parking lot.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item? Okay. Did you like to speak in favor, sir?
Yes.
In favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If you please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Don Williams, and I represent the Star West as a developer. And this rezoning is required because when this land was initially set out, the commercial area went much deeper than, if you look at that one map, it went much deeper than what O'Reilly's purchased, when O'Reilly's purchased the piece that they bought. And in order to keep from having a dead spot in between O'Reilly's and the area that's zoned back there for multifamily, we need to rezone this section to be able to have a contiguous five-acre tract behind O'Reilly's. And the, what we intend for this is to have a very low-density project on this property. In other words, with the R2 zoning, we will not have, you know, like, huge apartment buildings back there. They're going to be all single-story duplexes. So our density will not be very, will not be very high on it. And so we do request that we rezone this section to be able to allow us to use the entire fabric tract. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that y'all have. O'Reilly Williams and I aren't kin to each other, by the way. He probably wanted me to say that. I'd claim him, but.
Appreciate that.
So, Mr. Williams, you were involved when this was originally platted and sold, the piece that O'Reilly's has?
Yes.
Do you have any information you could elaborate on this access easement?
You know, I've seen that access easement. I can't recall it off the top of my head. I was looking through my file, but my files are not that good to be able to pull it out. But that, I don't know, do you remember Bourbon Street, which is west? Okay, that's an access easement that goes down through, through that development and accesses, well, there's apartments back in there, there's several, several things. And it's kind of a common way to be able to access through another property to get to the property, is to use the access easements. And this, they are typically designed to allow the entity that dedicates the access easement has a responsibility of maintaining it in the absence of a, like a homeowners' association, or some type of association. But in this case, the responsibility for the upkeep is on O'Reilly's. But I can't read you the document because I don't have it in front of me.
And then you stated that the thought is to go with low-density in here, even though the comprehensive plan has this for commercial development, you're thinking low-density R2?
Yeah, it's considerably less density than what a commercial would be, what a commercial development would be, or what the R3 zoning that's back behind it would allow. And the, the low-density works back there because of somewhat limited access by coming through that. I know we've met with the fire department, and the access through that parking lot will be designated, a designated fire lane, which it's one now, but it's not designated as such.
So would you happen to know that pavement that's there now, is it rated to be a fire lane?
It will be a fire, it will be a fire lane.
But do you know if the improvements that are currently there in the parking lot at O'Reilly's, are they currently meet the standard for a fire lane?
They, it's not marked. By talking to the fire marshal, he said it is a fire lane, but it's just not marked. So the fire lane comes in and goes down. So they're, in order to, you're required to provide that fire lane within 150 feet of any portion of the building. And so, that 150 feet is a designated fire lane, as it is. But it just happens not to be marked, which it will be.
Let's say it's hard to tell if there's a hammerhead turnaround on there from this document, so I don't know if there is or not. So, no. Okay. Alright, I think that's the question, the only question I have.
Anybody else? I might commend you guys for having a full, full contingency of people. I'm impressed.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this, to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition, or if you have a question, if you would come forward. Mm-hmm. Hi.
I'm Becky Shirley, 5521 West 6th. So I own the property to the west. And there is an easement that runs along the full length.
Could you get just a little closer to the microphone?
I own the property to the west, and I own the easement, or the easement runs along the whole length of my property, that-
That utility easement that-
Yes.
-fronts on Sixth Street access, okay.
So my main question was access to the property back there. So now they're talking O'Reilly's. Is that strictly a utility easement?
I believe that's my understanding. When we get through this portion, I'll have, I'll have staff or the applicant confirm that for us tonight.
Okay. Because I wondered about maintenance on that. I assumed that's what it was. It's what I've assumed all along, but I didn't know.
Okay.
So I just wanted to find out about access. So there was-
So that would, that would be your question, is that if that easement that's on your property, is it strictly utility and not an access easement?
Correct.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Seeing no one, we would allow to have staff and/or the applicant to answer the question that's been raised on the utility easement.
So this might answer a lot of questions. I do have the, it's kind of a site plan with the access easement. Okay, so this is the existing private access easement. And then I missed which part she owned.
Okay, so the question that she had is that on the, on the other side where the utility easement is, that's her property where the utility easement is?
Okay.
And her question is, what's her responsibility as the property owner of the utility easement for?
I think that's beyond the agenda item.
Okay, well, but she's asking for the question, and it is a public hearing, so can we answer her question?
Well, it's about this piece of property is on the agenda and not her property. And it's, the easement of the utility easement isn't on the agenda, it's the map amendment. I would advise that we would stick to this property, not her property, and stop and discuss with her. That's my advice.
I'm sorry, we've been advised not to speak to that subject. So if you want to contact staff, they can answer that question. Okay, I think that's it. So we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to provide findings and alternatives for us.
Alright, your findings for this are that the Land Development Code allows for rezoning of land via map amendments. RTM zoning, which is the two-family and multifamily residential zoning, is located in the vicinity, and that the comprehensive plan calls for commercial uses in this area. Your alternatives are to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed map amendment, or you can find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property, and you can recommend that the city council disapprove the map amendment, or you can find that additional information or discussion is needed and table this request to a certain date.
I guess I'm curious, is it beyond our purview to care about whether or not O'Reilly's and the developer have the access worked out? I mean, do we, it's not really us to decide or discuss that, is it?
I mean, I think in my mind, it's if you've got a private access for a development, how large of a development would you would have to come across there? If this is, the density, I think, is more the question I have, about what would go back there. And then I'm a little torn with the fact that the comprehensive plan kind of has this whole zone as commercial. Yet we do have a need here in Stillwater for more affordable housing, and this particular zoning would provide more of kind of that starter-type housing that we're lacking.
Yeah. And it would seem like it would be a very limited number of commercial businesses that would choose that location off of Sixth, behind O'Reilly's, to do anything with. So I guess I'd propose to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve it, the map amendment.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. We shall now vote. Motion passes four yes, one abstain. The next item on the agenda is a specific use permit, SUP 24-06, and we shall hear from staff first.
Okay. This is a specific use permit request at 1600 North Perkins Road. The request is to allow the use of vehicle and equipment sales and services in commercial shopping zoning district. This is an area map of the property. As you can see, it has frontage along North Perkins Road. This is located in the northern part of town. It does share a lot with Lowe's. It's located in the southeast corner of that lot. The Cimarron Town Homes are located directly to the south. This is a proposed site plan. This is just preliminary at this point, or kind of conceptual, if you will. If you notice, there is a proposed access there, and they are proposing to use the southernmost Lowe's entrance/exit access point. This is a street view. Currently, the lot is vacant, and as you can see, there is screening there between the subject property and the Cimarron Town Homes there. This is a zoning map. The property is zoned commercial shopping and is surrounded on three sides by the same commercial shopping zoning. Two-family and multifamily residential zoning is located to the south, and multifamily intermediate is located to the southeast, across from Perkins Road. The comprehensive plan in this area calls for commercial uses. Okay, and then are there any questions for staff?
Question I have is, so for this particular use, the auto service, then I'm assuming that this does not typically go into commercial shopping by right, which is why this SUP is coming before us?
That is correct.
Okay. What zoning does this type of business typically is allowed by right?
What, I guess, are you asking where would...
Where would we be able to find this, that would be allowed zoned by right, this particular use?
I think she's asking, is there another zoning district that they could go into with Allen SUP?
Thank you.
Is that my question?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Okay. Commercial general...
Okay.
Would allow that.
Okay. That was my question. Thanks. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Nope. Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'd ask if the applicant would like to come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Juan Vasquez with Vasquez Engineering, 1919 South Charlotte Road, Garland, Texas, 75042. I'm here representing Discount Tire Company. Discount Tire Company is one of the largest tire dealers in the country with over 1,200 stores. There are several stores here in Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, Martinsville, Tulsa. So we've done them all over the country. Discount Tire, if you don't know, only does tires and wheels. There's no alignments, there's no battery, there's no grease, there's no lube, there's no transmission, there's no bodywork. Everything is done, just tires and wheels. Everything is conducted within the building, nothing's conducted outside. There are no tires stored outside, everything is stored inside the building. This is a national retailer, and they're entering into an agreement with Lowe's to purchase a portion of their land. As you know, Lowe's, Home Depot, those large shopping centers typically buy large pieces of parcel, they put a large parking lot on it, and then after a while, they go, hmm, maybe we can carve out an acre for use. And so you'll see throughout the country, you'll see quick-service restaurants, smaller retail located within a Home Depot or a Lowe's, and this is how they come to fruition. And so we're looking at 0.85 acres for this site. Discount Tire is open Monday through Saturday, Monday through Friday, 8 to 6, and closed on Sunday. And they close at 5 on Saturday. So unlike a QSR that could go in this location, we're closed when everybody else comes home from work, and we're not open on Sundays. I know there was an issue in regards to, that Josh brought up to me earlier this week, about potential noise from our development. You know, we're located in a commercial shopping center in Lowe's. We're next to Perkins Road, which is a large thoroughfare. You have a railroad track behind us as well, so we're in an urban, you know, noise-level portion of the city, so you are going to have some noise. These are measurements, our building is approximately 105 feet from the closest town home to the south of us. Our parking lot is set off the property line, so there is that 16-foot buffer. There is the trees that are going to remain. You've got the wood fence, of course, we're going to have to reset it once we do our grading and stuff for the development. Our access will be through the Lowe's parking lot, and, you know, similar to the case before, these are two national retailers that are going into business. There'll be an agreement, maintenance, who's taking care of what. So, you know, this is something that's not new to them, so this is something we do all day. And so access will be through the Lowe's parking lot. There'll be no access to, direct access to Perkins. There'll be no access to, of course, to the Town Homes to the south of us. And as you can see, for our site plan, it's pretty small, don't have that much parking there, so there's not a lot of cars coming in and out and stuff. Be happy to judge any questions you may have.
So could you tell me again your hours of operation?
Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., closed on Sunday. No early bird drop-off, no cars overnight.
Okay, no drop-off and no overnight parking.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We're open, you know, we open at 8 o'clock. You can come at 8 o'clock. We do a lot of stuff online for appointments. So you're not sitting there all day waiting for your vehicle.
How many bays?
Six bays. Three doors, two bays per door.
Noise would be my primary concern, but...
There'd be impact wrenches that are inside the garage.
And the doors would open to the north, I believe.
The doors would face south. I was wondering whether it fits, that we fit on that property there.
The doors would face south?
Or, I'm giving my direction wrong. They'll face the Town Homes.
Yep. If you go back a couple more pages in the packet...
Okay. Yeah, oh, that's what that's telling me.
Yeah, or go back one, go the other way. Flip it over, right there.
Got you. Thanks.
Yeah, that would have been my question as well, would be the hours of operation and when the impact wrenches would be in operation.
Right. And we try to keep it as far as possible away from the Town Homes. So we are facing the side of the buildings. The Town Homes run parallel to Perkins, so the front doors face Perkins or face the rear of their property. So we'll be facing the sides of their buildings. I think there's three buildings that kind of are in the area of our development. And like I said, we're a little bit over 100 feet away from the garage bay, so you know, you might hear, you probably will hear something, but you'll hear the cars from Perkins Road as well, and you'll hear the commotion in Lowe's. I think Lowe's closes at probably 9 or 10 o'clock every day, and they open at 6 or 7.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item to come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this item to please come forward.
Kenny Holman, 307 West Pierce Road. I am the president of the HOA there at Cimarron Town Homes, and a big concern of ours is the noise. And if it says the door is open to the south and you get a north wind, it's going to travel. And I've had several of my owners concerned about sleeping during the day or something like that, or if you have a baby, and she's trying to get a nap or things like that. But I do have a question. Is it, are the doors opening to the south, really?
The way that the plan is laid out, the bays are accessed, drive in from the south, and it's in and out on the south.
Yeah, those air impacts and the compressors, that sound's going to travel. I mean, I've worked in them, I know. And so, yes, we do not want that. And is it a concrete building or is it a metal building?
That I do not know, but we can ask the applicant to come back after you speak and answer those questions.
Okay, I wonder why the door's not opening to the north. That's another question I'm concerned about.
Did you have any other questions, sir?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience. I don't see anyone else in the audience who hasn't spoken, so at this time, we would allow the applicant to come back and address those questions.
So the building is a masonry-type building, so there's no metal as far as the metal construction. So it's a split-faced block typically what they use, 26 feet high. As far as the bays facing, this is the only way we can make the site work. You know, we, you know, being a national retailer with, you know, over 1,000 stores, you know, we take this seriously, we don't take lightly. So we've been looking at this property probably for over a year, you know, trying to get it the way that it fits and works operational-wise for Discount Tire and also for Lowe's as well. So we have direction from them as well on how we need to fit on their property as to not obstruct their business as well. So south is really the only way that we could, you know, make the site plan work, you know, for Discount Tire and for Lowe's.
I'm going to assume that the way that you've got this laid out, that your techs are probably driving the vehicles in and out of the bays. Is that correct?
Typically, they'll let you drive your car in as well, because in doing tires and wheels, you're not there very long, and so...
And I'm going to assume that if you were to flip it, then you're going to have people that are going to be trying to pull out into, through your drive lane, and that you've done it this way to minimize potential vehicular collisions.
Trying to keep Discount Tire traffic with Discount Tire, keep Lowe's traffic with Lowe's traffic.
Right. So then I think a question I would ask then about the noise concern, is it standard practice for the doors to be up or down?
They're open while they're working.
So they're open while they're working?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then, so there's nothing to really stop the sound?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Right. If they got three doors, if it's a slow day, if they're not working on bay, they'll close the door, but when they're working, the doors are open.
Doors are open?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think that answers the question.
There's a, on this map, there's an existing, it looks like an existing eight-foot wood fence.
Yes, sir.
And a retaining wall. Does the retaining wall exist?
No, the retaining wall would be new.
Okay. How tall would that be?
Probably, you know, three or four feet tall. We need to change grade because the site kind of slopes off there, so we kind of flattened it out.
So no noise abatement at three feet, really?
No. But, you know, if that is, if that's going to, you know, if that's what we need to do, I spoke to Discount Tire this morning, and we can't control what Lowe's does, we can't control what we do on our 0.5, eight-acre tract, but, you know, we can't, we are agreeable, you know, to replacing the eight-foot wood fence with an eight-foot-high masonry screen wall. I said, we've got stores all over the country, we're not here to make any of these.
Yeah. Well, I'm no expert, but that would seem like that would be helpful.
Yes, of course. You do it all the time for residential homes.
Masonry is going to absorb more sound, it's going to be a better sound buffer because it'll dampen the sound with the weight of the...
We've done them all over the country, it's not an issue for us.
On this property, where are the compressors located?
Compressors as...
Air compressors for the guns.
Oh, they're inside the building.
Inside the building?
Yeah, towards the back wall, which would be the opposite to the north wall.
North wall.
Because you pull in to the bays, and then all the equipment and stuff, and tires and stuff, they're mezzanine level, and then you have all the air things up towards the rear.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions or follow-up for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
Okay, your staff findings are that the Land Development Code allows for this use in the commercial shopping zoning district with a specific use permit, and the comprehensive plan calls for commercial uses at this property's location. Your alternatives for this are to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed specific use permit. You can find that the proposed use is not appropriate for the property based upon the impacts surrounding the vicinity, and recommend that the City Council disapprove the specific use permit. Or you can find that additional information or discussion is needed and table to a date certain.
If I may, we can also add another option. You can approve with conditions, such as the landscaping and buffering those items.
So I would say the applicant has offered to do something a little bit different based on the concerns of the neighbors for the buffering for the sound. And so Chair would move to approve this SUP with the condition that eight-foot-high masonry wall be put in place to abate sound.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. And that concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible action.
No items from the campus.
All right. The one item that is listed is the next regular meeting is February 4. And the last item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. We are now adjourned.